Greetings. Happy Monday. It is Monday, August 22nd. And this is a special edition of Conversations with Nicole. I have been doing these virtual meet and greets and I'm afraid to tell you all I lied. I told you all Saturday was gonna be my last one, but somebody hit me up and was like, Nicole, can we get on the live? I want to meet the peoples. And I was like, sure, we can oblige you. So this is an opportunity for my viewers to interact with the candidates. And so bringing up the rear, they say, they talk about saving the best for last, so maybe that's what's happening. I got Mr. Josh Johnson. And so Josh Johnson is running for Leon County Commission at Large Group Two. And so this is an interactive live and I want you all to meet and greet Josh and, and ask him questions. Let him know what your concerns are. We're gonna hear from him in just a little bit. But I want to hear from y'all. I want to know where you are tuning in from. So just give us a shout out. City and state or just say, hey, good evening, good afternoon. Let us know where you are. I see you cousin Denise. She's over in Texas. Thank you for being here. So yeah, this is again, Election Day is tomorrow. Yesterday was the last day of early voting. Some of you expressed that you were early voting. So kudos to you. And it doesn't matter whether you are early, you early voted or you voting tomorrow, just as long as you vote. That's, that's the main thing. All right, we got Mr. Marcus Nicholas, our newest school board member on. Thank you for being here. He said he's at his house. Well, one time for being at the house. Thank you, sir. So tag some friends, family members, let them know they need to be on here so that you all can meet and greet Josh and ask him some questions. Look, before I got on, Josh was like, I'm not shying away from no questions. So let them know, I'm ready for the smoke. Bring it, bring it. What y'all got? Bring it. All right. So while you all are logging on, tuning in, again, we are live on Facebook and on YouTube. I am going to read Josh's bio. Josh Johnson is a teacher at Amos P. Godbe High School here in Tallahassee. He has been awarded Educator of the Year and nominated Teacher of the Year. Kudos to you. He also is a small business owner and president of the Six Two One Gallery, a forty year old, forty-one-year-old contemporary art gallery located in the heart of Railroad Square. Help me welcome Mr. Josh Johnson.
Hey Nicole. Hey y'all, everybody out there. How's it going?
Hey, going well, going well. So we got a...
Go Cougars. I see somebody threw up a go cougar.
Right, right, right. So that's Marcus. And Mr. Maine Shula is in the house. So thank you for being here, Maine. So Josh, for those who don't know who you are, let them know. Who is Josh Johnson? Not what you do, but who are you?
Absolutely. I am a seventh generation Leon County. I have been here my entire life. My family up until everybody that I could have known has been in Leon County. I have been educated in public schools here. My graduate and undergraduate degree are from FAMU, which is an institution right here. I have lived, I have worked, I have served, I have played, and I have prayed in Leon County. It is an extension, not only of, you know, where I exist in the world, but it is also an extension of the work that I have done. You mentioned the gallery, you mentioned the school, and you mentioned that I'm a small business owner. And I have tried to be extremely active in my community. And while I said, well, I know you said, don't tell them what you do. What I do is also who I am. Because every role that I step into, I step into it with the understanding that I have a responsibility and an obligation to serve somebody and to make sure that that work is done the best that it can be, because it too trickles out into the place that I love and the place that I call home. I often say that home may well be the most important word in the English language. And I mean that. And Leon County is a manifestation of that importance to me. So thank you for having me. Thank you for letting me introduce myself. And I'm ready to get cooking.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you for that introduction. So I hope you all got just a little taste of who Josh Johnson is. I will share with you all that Josh and I have a relationship via the Greater Works Network. So Josh has a show on the network called Six Two One.
Six Two One Presents: Art in the Margins with me, Josh Johnson. And that is another endeavor. You know, I'm sure a lot of stuff's gonna pop up as I start talking. And that is not a brag, but I am a busy little bee. And I am not busy, you know, just for the sake of being busy. I believe in this work. And so yes, Art in the Margins, as everybody knows, and as you know, is a show that highlights Black and marginal artists from all over the country and state and locally, mainly locally. And so that has been a labor of love as well. Everything that I do is a labor of love. I refuse to do stuff that I don't like to do. And it's usually because whatever I engage, I like because I do it my way. You know, some people say, well, Josh, you didn't want to cut your hair before this race? No, I do the things that I do in my way. And I think that the overwhelming support that I've been getting throughout the course of this race means that people like authenticity. And that's what I am as well.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. So if you all have not seen Art in the Margins, I definitely recommend that you check, check that out on Roku, on the Greater Works Network specifically. All right. So let's dive in. Let's dive in. So public investments is a topic that you have identified as one that you are kind of passionate about. So tell us, what about public investments is interesting to you? And what are some of your solutions as it relates to it?
So public investments is one of those things that I've seen throughout the course of this campaign that sometimes is it's boring until people find out what it is and what it has the power to do. You know, the first fifteen seconds of my talks on public investments, I can see people nodding off, you know, this is all policy and all stuff that's gonna get off in the weeds, until I reel them in and let people know that public investments and what we do at a local government level with local governance decisions is not only the backbone of community, but it's the way that communities either thrive or just put in a position to survive. And so public investments could be anything from financial resources that local governments or municipalities hold, infrastructural resources, social resources, social capital. And so the main way that I have been looking at it is the way that we spend our money. If we have in our faces right now, and this is not anything to, you know, sound scary or sensational, but the truth is the truth. We are facing a series of what people call local crises, right? And those things range from affordable housing, environmental concerns, small business strain, a lack of an undergirded workforce, and the list goes on, and homelessness, the list goes on. And so the way that we spend our money has to be particular. And I am not talking about giveaways here. I am talking about the money that we are going to spend anyways. We have got to start spending that money in issues that get to the root of the issues that we're dealing with, the issues that orbit it. And so, for example, if you're going to deal with crime, which I know is something we're going to talk about too, so I won't get too far into this. But if you're gonna deal with crime, one of the things that you might want to look at, one of the things that I would look at is how we look at the issues that orbit crime, like poverty and jobs and mental health things. And so that if you're investing adequately in the things that orbit the issue, the issue itself has no choice but to shrink. And I think that's how you deal with crises. A lot of times, people see a crisis bubbling up or a crisis that is confronting us, and we start throwing dollars at the thing itself. And what happens with that is the money gets sucked into a vacuum because the crisis is here now. And you have to hit the issues that spawn or grow or create that crisis. And so that's what I'm talking about with public investments. We have to make these things a more equitable endeavor. I've been in Tallahassee, like I told you, my whole life, thirty-four years. And six grandfathers and six grandmothers before me have been here. And since the camera was invented, almost, the South Side looks the exact same, right? I look back through my photo albums. I look back through some of my mama's photo albums. And I look back through some of my grandma's photo albums. And I can still locate places on the South Side perfectly. And some of that's a good thing, right? Because, you know, community is traditional, right? And we want traditions in our community. But when we are seeing the same things, right? That are, that are a result of the same problems that aren't happening other places. And I am not just preaching for the South Side, right? Highway twenty, the West Side now, Lake Jackson, it's all over. I hope I'm not, if I'm talking too much, Nicole, say Josh.
Well, I'm gonna jump in really actually because I'm curious as to how do you prioritize all of that?
Absolutely. I think, so that's why I throw that little caveat in there that I'm not talking about giveaways. I'm talking about the money that we're already gonna spend anyways. This money, right, when local government, for an example, and I know that this has become a hotbed issue, and I know that this is one of the things that I have become known for, but the twenty-seven million, right? That was an allocation of money that was supposed to be for economic vitalization, right? That money is going to be spent. The priorities that the money should be spent on is usually at the whim of the ingenuity in the inventiveness of the local government officials. And so when we have money that's supposed to be used for certain things, the blueprint or the formula is sometimes there for us. I just think, and again, I really do hate to sensationalize, especially in this current political climate, because everything's so divisive. But it is my truth that I think complacency has descended us into a local government decision-making process that says, if something can be justified on the facade as being good, we will only take staff recommendation up until that point. And I do think it's incumbent on local leaders to read just as much as staff does, to investigate just as much as staff does, so that we can also get in front of unintended consequences that some of this spending has absolutely put us in. And there's just no doubt about that. We can see it when we walk out our doors.
Did you tell the people to read, Josh?
No, I told the, the people that I'm running against that, and I'm sure they're reading too, but that re, not the people, not the...
No, I said, well, I'm sorry. Did you tell the leaders to read, Josh?
Let me, let me, let me.
Did he take his glasses off on me? Wait a minute.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm not saying that they're not reading. Maybe they're reading something a little different than I'm reading. But I don't see how you can read a twenty-seven million dollar injection that's gonna create less than forty permanent jobs and say, I'm gonna sign off on, right? And so maybe somebody's reading, but then maybe they're just reading a little different than me. I don't see how you see an eighty million dollar expansion to a Northeast Gateway project for development that hasn't even occurred yet as people are crawling out of a pandemic and say, that's the thing I want to go with. Now, I have strayed away from making the more serious accusations, right? That people are doing the bidding of favors. I'm not gonna go there, but I do think it can be rather benign to say that I think that we ought to read these things deeper so that we can really account for the unintended consequences. I stand by it. I stand by it, Madam CEO.
There must be the educator in them. Must be the educator. Anyway, no, I concur. They definitely do need...
And I'm not saying they don't, but they are.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. All right. Let's move on to affordable housing. But before we do, for those of you who are just joining me, I am on with Mr. Josh Johnson. He is running for Leon County Commission at Large Group Two. Leon County Commission at Large Group Two. That position is currently held by Mr. Nick Maddox. And so we are talking a little bit about some of his platform issues and public investments was our first topic. And now we're moving on to affordable housing. So tell me, your thoughts around affordable housing in terms of, do we have enough, not enough? And if not enough, what can we do to increase that?
We absolutely do not have enough. Nationwide trend is that it's a crisis. And I think that that has been exacerbated in Leon County. It is absolutely a problem here. And it's, it's so bad here that it's a problem across the board, right? That it's not yet, affordable housing is no longer a problem that you see people at the lower end of the average median income suffering from. It is across the board. People that would be considered poor, people that would be considered middle-class, and people that would be considered upper-middle-class, up into upper-class are facing affordable housing crisis. And I think that the particular reason for that here is the urban services area is something that houses the skeleton for the services that the city renders to citizens in the city, right? Our urban services area, it's a little boundary marker. And our urban services area is being expanded in ways that you can't imagine. Well, I shouldn't have said it like that, in ways that we can all imagine because we see it. But I think are highly concerning for development projects. And while on the surface that may seem benign, because growth is important, and I want to see my city and my county grow, we have to do it in smart ways. Smart growth is what they call it. And so when we expand the urban services area to build some new development, what we do is take the true center of gravity in the area that we've expanded, the urban service area. And so since most of the expansions have been in the Northeast, right? The true gravity of South Side is getting smaller. And so the places that already had the biggest needs are now being compounded with even more need because they are getting less investment because it is being stretched north, right? And while I love my neighbors on the Northeast, God knows that I do. Some of those investments are least needed in those areas, right? And so when the numbers run, that these development projects are landing homes in these areas with the average prices being two hundred and seventy to two hundred thousand dollars, and that's being considered affordable. Again, I go back to the fact that I do not know what other people are looking at, but that is not average affordable home. That's just not how that works. And so I think that our affordable housing can actually be remedied. And I'm not saying this from a poetic or cosmetic standpoint. I'm saying that we have to put a hold on how we expand the urban service area or just follow our own comp plan. The comp plan was written by local government officials, and we're not following our very own comp plan so that we can accommodate developer-heavy projects. And I think it's wrong. Absolutely wrong.
Now, you know, there's also affordable houses, not just ownership or single-family detached dwellings. Also multifamily as well.
Absolutely.
So with us being in a college town, that tends to drive the pricing of rental units and particularly apartment units, multifamily units.
It's actually the majority.
So any thoughts around, you know, encouraging developers to do more affordable multifamily units if there's, you know, either some type of subsidy or waiving of permitting fees or, you know, something or another to encourage that type of thing?
So we make, developers have a lot of loopholes. And again, I am not beating up on developers. I understand that you've got a business to run. But for example, a developer can buy residential and then recode commercial. And so they get commercial plots for residential prices or vice versa, right? There are several loopholes that developers can use. And to, to make those things more applicable, you see time and time again, developers say, well, what we'll do is we'll put a certain amount of our building units, whether it's multifamily or single-family, we'll put a certain amount of those things for the affordable housing rate or the average median income rate for that area, right? So we know that it can be done because it's proposed, done, and signed off on every day. The problem is when the developer doesn't follow through on the promise that they made to local government officials. There is nobody, the, the Big Ben Chamber of Commerce had a great question on this. There's nobody watchdogging the process to make sure that the developers are doing it. And so if you look at the development in what we now call Southwood, right? Fifteen years ago, it wasn't Southwood, but there, a development swept in about fifteen years ago, liberally speaking, give or take, I should say. And they said that some of that would be offset for affordable housing. That never occurred. That never happened. That's the end of that story. I wish there was something else that I could drive home, but it just never happened. And that's unfortunate.
Yeah, supposedly. And I forget what they call this, but there's like money set aside for that, like to...
I think it's usually ingratiated in the project, but I may be missing something. Yeah. Oh, do you mean, oh, well, you may, are you meaning the ship funds at the county? Oh, okay, okay.
This is in projects like a Southwood that there's some developer dollars that are set aside to, if they're not gonna build it, you know, a portion of some, some proceeds or some dollars are allocated towards affordable housing or something like that. I forget what they call that. But at any rate. Okay, so you said smart growth, monitoring the expansion of the urban services area, following the comp plan, those types of things.
Absolutely.
Okay. So let's move on to crime. And again, for those of you who are just joining us, I am with Josh Johnson, who is running for Leon County Commission at Large Group Two. This is an interactive live. So this is a virtual meet and greet, your opportunity to ask questions, your opportunity to get your comments in. Election Day is tomorrow. Early voting ended yesterday. So this is like the last hurrah. All right. So we got Rashid on here. Hey, Ra. All right. And he said, those developers are trying to run policy. Okay. Hey, Geraldine, thanks for being here, Ms. Ward. All right. JD said, do you think it's important to have more elected officials from the local area?
There's two ways I could answer his question. So I just want to clarify what he means. Does he mean, do we think that there should be more elected officials who were born here? I think that's what he's saying. I would never, and I'm saying this to maybe even shoot myself in the foot, right? I'm a seventh-generation Leon County, and I would love to say absolutely, but I don't want to get in the process like that. I think that our elected officials should be qualified. Obviously, I think that they should live here and in the districts they represent. But outside of those things, as a government teacher, I know that there is only a few qualifications to run for office. The saddest thing is the qualification most often mentioned is actually being qualified. But outside of that, the qualifications are citizenship, living in the area that you want to represent and meeting the filing deadlines. And after that, it's up to the people. And I think it should always be up to the people. And I don't want to put Josh Johnson in a situation to say, yeah, our local official should be from here. No, I'm just one of the people. I'm just one of the people. But I do appreciate that question, Floyd. And I know JD too.
He said, born here.
Born here. I know, I know. Absolutely.
Cool. All right. So our...
Thank you, Terry.
Yes, kind of our last issue. Well, wait a minute. Before we move on to that, I see Ms. Johnson on here. She said, what can we expect from your seat if you win election on tomorrow?
What you can expect from the seat is they're probably gonna have to lower it at the dius because I'm too tall. But what, what you can expect from the man is this. On the campaign trail, I have been talking about very specific things. And it's why, as a school teacher, I have been the most endorsed candidate in this race, the most individual donors in this race. I have led fundraising for cycles. And it's because the things that we're talking about on the campaign trail, public investments, affordable housing, environmental concerns, the way we're going to undergird our workforce to support our small businesses, especially crawling out of a pandemic, is the very things that I plan to attack day one. I am a mission-based person. I have laid out my mission very clearly on every palm card, website, and ear that I talk to. This is the mission. This is the agenda. And I promise you, every waking hour from that seat will be spent on these issues. Now, things are gonna pop up again. And I know that the job is not as easy as campaigning makes it sound, which is why I do give incumbents some credit. But in a lot of ways, that's where the credit stops because what we said we were gonna do is what we have to do. And I haven't seen that, which is what made me run in this race. I don't think that many of the people have seen that, which is why my support has been so overwhelming. I do not chalk it up to my charisma and my good looks, right? I know that... Look, Nicole, why did you laugh at that? That wasn't a joke.
I ain't saying that. Let me go. Let me get out of here.
It's because people are ready to see something new. And so I promise you that if you give me that opportunity to do that new thing, I am going to fight to do it, just like I do every day in my business, in my classroom, in that gallery, and in my community.
So I think you answered this question, but I'm just gonna ask it anyway. Michael Cork from the Michael Cork Morning Show, ninety-five point three FM, hallelujah, ninety-five point three. He says, what do you plan to bring to the office that's currently missing?
Oh, that's a good one. That's what you call it. That's what I call a tentacle answer. I could go on that one all day. But what I will say is, ew, let me be very careful because I've also tried, not tried, I've been successful in not being personal. I do want to keep it professional, only professional critiques. And so I say this very often. I believe by fact that there's a difference between local government and local governance. Local government is the apparatus, you know, the people elected, the machine that's moving downtown at the courthouse and at City Hall. But local governance are the decisions that are being made down there. And I think what I'm going to bring to the seat that has not been there for a very long time is healthy local governance, healthy local decisions. Six, six of the most controversial issues, six of the last most controversial issue in local government, in our local government cannon have all been signed off on by my opponent. All of them. This is not a personal attack. This is a matter of public record. From D.R. Horton to Walani to the twenty-seven million, it seems that some people take this job with righteousness in their heart, common sense in their minds, and a passion to serve their community in their makeup. However, I do think that as time goes on, twelve years, the incumbent's been there, people grow complacent, and these seats become jobs. And we all know that a person will do anything to keep their job. But it's the job of an elected official to do what's right, even if you lose the job, right? This is not a supplement of retirement. This is not an income opportunity. This is a service endeavor. And if you are not going to treat it like that, it is time to do what is best and let somebody who is willing to do just that. So, Mr. Court, to answer your question, I think I'm gonna put us on a better trajectory for some good local decision-making that is going to benefit the people because these types of problems that we have do not happen overnight. Sometimes they happen over twelve years' time.
Okay. All right. Mr. Jones, I see your question. I'll come back to it because I do want Josh to tell us his thoughts on crime and his solutions as it relates to it. So Josh, what you got?
Was that a question I could...
Yes, your thoughts on crime, because crime was your third, your third issue. So share what you believe that the issues are as it relates to crime and what you believe some of the solutions are.
Absolutely. Awesome. I'll start by saying my thoughts on crime are the fact that... Absolutely. Awesome. I'll start by saying my thoughts on crime are the fact that it's here, it's rampant, we see it, it's on an, on an upclimb. Uh, I think that there are some solutions to crime, some very particular solutions to crime. Uh, and I wanna start off being a little colloquial, showing, um, how I deal with this. Uh, so you mentioned coming in here that I was nominated teacher of the year and, you know, nominated educator of the year. And I won educator of the year that year, and it's one of my proudest accomplishments. And there's a difference. Teacher of the year is what you do in the classroom. Educator of the year is how you take the classroom abroad, right? How you serve the classroom, how you serve the school, and how you serve the community. At a Title One school, Godbe High School, which I think is just one of the greatest things ever built by the minds of men and the hands of men and women, I really do believe that. But we do serve a certain population of Godbe, right? Um, it's usually, um, African Americans, um, poor Hispanics, poor whites, poor African Americans, right? It's a Title One school. And the demographic that I deal with every day, I'm gonna just remove this one particular demographic for a second because locally, it's the demographic that's been affected the most by crime. Uh, and that's the boys that I teach, the young African American males, right? These are some of the brightest young men on the planet. And the fact that I have had to bury some of them, visit some of them days before graduation at the hospital um, is a result of some personal decision-making on their part. There's no fact, I mean, there's no doubt about that. But there's also some responsibility on us. I think it was, uh, Victor Hugo who said, wherever there's darkness, there will be crime. The guilty party is he who commits the crime, but also he who casts the darkness, right? There has been some darkness cast in this community. There is very few opportunities for reasonable partnerships, whether it's nonprofit or educational. There's few opportunities for work programs. The trades are not promoted like they should be. You have Marcus Nicholas on this call, if I'm not mistaken, and Marcus is not only a friend, but Marcus has been a champion of this very issue. As a matter of fact, so much of what I learned on this issue came from Marcus. And it's because you have to, if we're going to complain, if we're going to endure the ills of crime and poverty, we also have to address very particularly the things that are causing them. And the things that are causing them are poverty, the lacks of opportunity, right? The lacks of exposure. And so I am interested in not just dealing from this thing, on this thing, from a penalization standpoint, standpoint, you know, these boys have to be punished. I hear that. You do have to pay for the crimes you commit. But they smell my cologne every day. I smell their cologne every day. There's a love engendered by me to them that I cannot divorce this issue from my personal responsibility and theirs. So if I have to take a few hits for it and say, maybe Johnson could be doing more, I would rather start the conversation there than to keep saying, these boys, these boys, these boys, they don't have a chance, they ain't doing this. No, we're not doing everything we can for them, and I see it every day. And I'm not just gonna keep seeing it. I'm gonna stand up, and then I'm gonna see it.
Okay, um, Terrell wants to know, as a public school teacher that interact with our youth daily, what do you think we can do to address at ri- at-risk youth in our underserved communities before they are involved in the criminal system?
One of the things I like to say is, um, at a teacher at a Title One school, I have been highly committed to Title One students. But I have also been committed to Title One homes, Title One parents, right? If we're not building relationships with law enforcement, the parents, right, and the student, and all the other factors that go into it, whether it's the local youth center or the churches or, you know, just the gas station that you see most of them, or whatever it is. If we're not building community partnerships, then I don't think that we're really on a trajectory to do much uh, in the face of an issue like this. But building those partnerships is going to take people who are willing to sojourn and go out into the community and put on the boots of service and tie those boots of service with the straps of strength so that somebody might be better served. And so I see this as a community effort, and I don't mean that in the trite recycled language that we hear in politics. I mean literally, the mama, the daddy, the teacher, the police officer, the principal, and local, uh, community partners, whether they're business owners or nonprofit CEOs. We all have to engage this issue like they're our kids, because they are.
No, very well said. Uh, my court said, man, they don't wanna see this guy in a debate. Powerful. I'm feeling really glad I decided to roll, enroll my son in Godbe.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Court.
Yeah, so, um, Terrell said, this is exactly the answer I wanted to hear. We must address the needs of the entire family in order to change the trajectory of the students. And so I know that is, um, to, that has been a challenge. I know there are some trust issues, um, oftentimes with, you know, parents and with certain, um, sects of the community. And so how do we build that trust? You know, how do we build that trust? That's the question.
Um, I could hit it better if I knew. Do you just mean parents and like law enforcement or pa-? Oh, uh, you know, sometimes it's a mistr- anyway, I hear what you're saying, that makes me a bit. Sometimes there's a mistrust of parents in the schools. Um, sometimes there's a mistrust of parents in law enforcement. And so sometimes we end up as a community, right? I'm gonna answer this question as a black man, right? Sometimes we, as a community, right, have certain mistrust, healthy mistrust, as we should of certain institutions, because those institutions have been the same institutions that have underserved us for decades, and then threw in our faces that they have underserved us. I understand the mistrust. However, being an agent on the inside, being a school teacher, being a business owner, I also understand that we are going to have to lower those barriers because there's people on the inside that love your children, not just as much as you do, but so dearly. Every time I'm standing in my classroom, I'm under the awareness that if anybody, or anything for that matter, I don't care if it's a man or a bear, if anything comes through that front door, it's got to deal with me first before any of my students. I don't care if you come with a knife or a gun, you have to see Mr. Johnson first. And I can't have that expectation without a deep-rooted love. You can't fight like I'm willing to fight for something you don't love. And we're in there, we're in there waiting for your students every morning. Now, I am also not glib, glib enough to, uh, not understand that the demographics that I deal with, some of them go through more from six-thirty to seven in the morning, just trying to get to school than I'll go through all week. And so it's gonna take some compassion on my part too, and some understanding. Sometimes, you know, look at all these gray hairs I got at thirty-four. All of these came from y'all's children. But I'm still going to endure them because I love them, and we are in there. So when you send them to us, send your trust too, because I promise you, I promise you, we're fighting for them every day, every day.
All right, well, I, I, you know, you speak so passionately and so intentionally. I just, I, I hope that that sentiment is, um, more prevalent amongst your colleagues than not. I know you can't, I know you can't everybody, but you know, some, some people go to work just to get a check. You follow what I'm saying?
You were right about that. You were right, but I, I just want you to know, and I'm not saying this to be a politician. I would take, and I've had several walks of life, um, but I would take teachers on me, with me to any battlefield. Um, would ju- just some of the most passionate, caring, um, and brilliant individuals that I could imagine. And so I would fight next to them every day in any forum, in any battlefield, and I mean that, I really do.
Okay, all right, um, let's see, Rashid said compassionate, understanding. All right, everyone needs to hear this. We love your children. All right, here today. So I'm gonna go back to Mr. Jones's question. And he says, as an at-large commissioner representing all of Leon County, will you go across the street when necessary to put your input?
When he says across the street, I think he means the city commission. Um, absolutely. As a matter of fact, sometimes it's incumbent on the job. You know, there's a lot that the city and county, uh, deal with together, a lot of intergovernmental agency boards. As a matter of fact, one of the most controversial at the moment is Blueprint, and that's a board that consists of, uh, the county and the city commission. And so not only, uh, will I go across the street to work, I would also go across the street every now and then to advocate and to listen, you know, not ever to get in the way of their business. I'm not saying that I would ever try to stymie their process, um, but I don't think that you can turn off service. And so what I am in the courthouse is the same thing that I'm gonna be in the city commission. Uh, I'm, excuse me, while I'm in city hall, and the same thing that I am in my classroom, and the same thing that I am when I'm pushing my shopping cart in Publix. And so the longer the shorter that is absolutely, it's necessary, and sometimes it's incumbent on the job.
Okay, very good. Well, that is all of the topics that you, you know, were passionate about. I will definitely, um, well, I hope, uh, our viewers, should I say, have benefited from this exchange. But I do have, uh, my final question. Um, and I will also just give an opportunity for the viewers, if you have any final questions, comments, put them in the chat so that we can address them. But my question is around mental health. Um, I work as a behavioral health navigator, connecting people with, uh, mental health and substance abuse resources here in the county. And while the county does provide resources to, um, some of our small clinics and, um, they also have a crisis response team. Um, my, my question is, do you believe that that's enough? And if not, what more can be done?
Uh, no, it's not enough. But on this issue in particular, um, I don't think it's not enough because people are trying to hurt people. I think that, well, I don't think, as me and you both know, uh, mental health is something that evolves at the speed of sound, or I should say our understanding to it, right? And so I think a lot of things that have been put in place have been put in place because that's how we understand it. Um, but I think that there's so many identifiers, there's so many root causes, and there's so many solutions and/or at least, uh, things that we can do to progress, uh, mental health advocacy that we just haven't been in the place. So one of the things that I always suggest is, uh, we've all heard this thing, don't work harder, work smarter. Uh, and I am not saying that mental health issues are something that don't deserve hard work. But what I am saying is that there are community partners, nonprofits, that are already doing the work. And they're doing it at a level that I could never do it, because I haven't spent my life doing it. And so the fact that our mental health resources don't have large or large enough allocations going directly to the nonprofits in our community that are serving these issues every day with the greatest of passion, expertise, and networking abilities is counterintuitive to me, to recreate a will that's already rolling so beautifully in another area when we could just make that wheel larger and benefit more people is something that I have always said and will always say. Um, and so, like you said, you are working in mental health, and I'm not sure if it's in a nonprofit, uh,
No.
But if, huh, wha- what was that?
It's with the state.
With the state, but if it is, um, we have these resources in our community. Um, you know what I should have done, uh, at the beginning of this campaign? I should have went through the nonprofit directory, uh, because if I'm not mistaken, and I know I'm not, I just don't know how many we have. I think that Leon County per capita has one of the largest nonprofit populations in the nation, right? In the nation, right? We have so many people doing so much good work. We should extend our resources to those people, um, and do what we can when necessary and maintain and let those facilities that we do have in place evolve as we learn more.
Okay, very good. Terrell, I saw your, um, question, so I'm gonna come back to that last, cuz
I should have said in the state, not the nation, by the way, I'm sorry.
Okay, you, you did, um, because it's a good closing question. Uh, uh, Michael Court said, will you continue to teach once in the seat?
Absolutely. So
Okay.
The formal answer to that question is if I'm elected, it would be in the middle of the school year. And there ain't nobody that's gonna pull me out of that classroom in the middle of a year. And the second thing is, I think I'm gonna continue to teach period, because, you know, when the lawyer gets elected, he continues practicing law. When the doctor gets elected, he keeps on practicing medicine. When the businessman gets elected, he keeps on with his business. He doesn't divest from his business. When the teacher gets elected, I am going to let every day, uh, my boys and my girls see that it doesn't matter what you're doing, nothing is more important, uh, than you. On top of that, um, I am fortunate that the job that I serve in would have no conflicts of interest, and I don't even see where it could have conflicts of interest. And so, um, absolutely, the answer to that question is yes.
Okay, and then this will be our next to the last question. Um, Ms. Johnson wants to know, what in your opinion is the greatest challenge toward addressing the concerns of the underprivileged and underfunded communities in the city?
Um, and who was that question from, so I can
Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, oh, um, so I'm not sure if Ms. Jo- did you say Ms. Johnson, right? I'm not sure if she was here at the beginning, and so I don't wanna repeat. But what I will say, I mean, I don't wanna repeat if she already heard that.
Yeah, I don't think, I think she may have got on a little late.
Okay, um, so one of the things that I said, Ms. Johnson, was the way that we use our public investments. Public investments are our resources, whether financial, social, or infrastructural, that local governments have and are going to spend regardless. And so, um, since we have this money and we know what it's earmarked for, some of it's for economic vitality and some of it's for this and some of it's for that. The money that is earmarked for the reasons of the underserved and underprivileged should be used for that. However, I'll just give you a quick example. When people say that we've had all of this millions and close to a billion, whatever it is, uh, investments in the south side of town, if you're driving through the south side of town, you might say what I say. Where did all this money go? Because I sure don't see it. And it's because anything on the south side can technically qualify as a south side investment. And this is just one example, right? And so an investment to the south side could be anything done in Southwood, anything done at the Don Veller Golf Course, anything done at, uh, Innovation Park, and I'm not saying anything bad about Innovation Park, anything done at the Tallahassee Junior Museum. Well, it's not even the Tallahassee Junior Museum anymore, you see how long I've been here, the Tallahassee Museum. And so while those things are technically, um, south side, some of them creep into west side, we all know that that investment didn't really do anything to uplift the real need of the south side. The real need of the south side is some, um, uh, equitable development, some small businesses, some opportunity, maybe some micro loans like we hand out everywhere else, maybe some direct investment from these pots of money, infrastructural concerns. One of the projects that the Duke Campbell Stadium, uh, investment jumped was Orange Avenue Infrastructure, right? The sidewalks on Orange Avenue and the sidewalks on Thorpe Street, right in front of the place that I work every day. Those are the things that we can do. You know, long gone is the time where people can say, well, we just don't have it right now. Oh, we have it. It's just, are you willing to spend it on people that you may not see as worth those investments? The south side of town, the south side of town has a sewage treatment facility plant, an airport, and a train, right? So when you drive by the sewage treatment facility plant, it smells quite literally like excrement outside, right? The train wakes somebody up every hour on the hour, and the plane wakes people up every hour other than that. These types of things wouldn't have all been huddled on any other one side of town. But now we have to start asking the question, who do we prioritize? And I'm not saying that you wanna prioritize any side of town over any other side of town. But what I am saying is, when you see need, you prioritize the need. And if that need exists on a side of town, then we need to be spending our money like it's a need. You're gonna spend the money anyway. You're not giving anybody a giveaway. A giveaway's twenty-seven million, a giveaway's eighty million to development that's not happening. Long's gone is we don't have the money anymore. Long's gone is we don't have the money anymore, we do have it, we're just not spending it in the ways that could really benefit the people who need it the most.
Sounds like Black Lives Matter versus All Lives Matter. But you didn't, you didn't hear that from me. Alright, uh, so we're gonna wrap this up. Uh, Terrell asks, I think, what, what would be a good closing question? And that's if elected tomorrow evening, Lord willing, what will be your call to action for us to support you?
Oh, if I get, uh, I love that question. Um, if I get elected tomorrow, what could the call of action be to support me? I'm gonna be very honest with you, the best thing that you could do or that I'm going to do if not elected, and, uh, I'm fighting for that not to be the case, but the best thing that you can do is hold my feet to the fire. Now, I know, uh, Mr. Bowman, so I know he would do it in love, but I don't care how you do it. Hold my feet to the fire, because that seat does not belong to me. And supporting me has nothing to do with supporting that seat. Supporting that seat means making sure the joker sitting in it is doing what he said he was gonna do. And so when you see me at Publix, as a matter of fact, I put my phone number, um, Nicole published my phone number live, uh, calling that phone number, holding my feet to the fire. Mr. Johnson, you said that you believed in equitable investment, I hadn't seen it. Only I can tell you is, I lied to you, it's coming, I'm working on it, or let me show you it here. But we are not holding local government officials to the fire, right? We are letting them say, nice, 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 smile, 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 twelve years, hey, no, what have you done? That's what we wanna know, what have you done?
So JD said, what took you so long to run for office?
I actually ran for office in two thousand sixteen. Um, if you're asking what took me so long to win, you only got another twenty-four hours left to wait, brother.
Got all the answers. A court said, I'm gonna pray for you first, then hold your feet to the fire. And Rashida, I think she about to collect, take up a, a collection. She said, in her ush, in her Usher voice, everybody, please stand face the hours, time for the collection. The sermon is over, all hearts and mind are well and clear, let's go.
No, now I'm primitive Baptist, we say if all hearts and minds are clear. Thank you, Debs.
Yes, alright, very good. So how can, you know, I know, like you said, we almost, uh, in almost twenty-four hours, we will know the results, but what can people do to, um, support you? Uh, or, or what are your needs? That's my question, what are your needs and, you know? The bottle is, is how they can connect with you.
Yes, fundraising has ceased, um, Tuesday. Uh, I think we would all be best to do, uh, what Mr. Cork said, and that's just pray. Um, now, if it's not decided tomorrow and nobody gets over fifty percent, then the top two challengers will go until November, that is also a high probability. Uh, and so I hope that we stay just as engaged till November. Um, and once we get rolling, and I'm not, I, I'm looking to end it tomorrow or be ended tomorrow, but, um, it could also work out that way. And so if that happens, please stay engaged, support me, right? Send a few texts for me, you know, throw a few dollars our way for fundraising, right? Or just tell your friends about us, help this movement in any way you can, as long as you think it's helping you. Um, because it is a labor, uh, but it's a labor of love. And so at this point, there's really nothing that we can do, um, except wait. I'm gonna have some sign waivers out tomorrow, I'm gonna be tying up a few Louis, uh, loose ends, uh, and I'm just gonna be, uh, waiting like everybody else.
Alright, very good, well, you all heard it right here. I hope that this virtual meeting greet was beneficial. Um, you learned a lot about Mr. Johnson and his platform and what his plans are if elected as your Leon County Commissioner-at-Large Group Two candidate. So, um, Josh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I really appreciate this, this was quite a, a lively discussion. And, um, so we wanna encourage everybody to vote. If you have not early voted, vote, 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 vote. The polls are open tomorrow, I think, seven to seven?
Yes.
Yes, so seven to seven, go to your precincts. Um, I think the courthouse also is, is open to anybody, so vote.
Oh yeah, that's the most important thing, uh, that during early voting, you could go to several different precincts. Tomorrow, you have to go to the precinct assigned to you or the courthouse. The courthouse is a catchall, anybody can vote in the courthouse.
Okay, very good, very good. Um, JD wants to know, will you be organizing a watch party?
You know what, I may, um, in this thing, people have been asking me, I don't know what I'm gonna do yet. I'm gonna decide tomorrow morning, but it, uh, goes anywhere from joining some friends to hosting my own small thing, hosting my own big thing, or just sitting somewhere where nobody knows me and looking at those results so I can emerge your next county commissioner or a school teacher, either's fine with me.
Very good, very good, well, again, thank you, Josh, thank you, viewers. Viewers, please, uh, again, vote. Also, I wanna encourage you, if you have not subscribed to the Conversations with Nicole YouTube channel, please do so, subscribe and it's important, and we need all the support we can get. We are live on Mondays and Wednesdays at eight thirty P M, focused on black and brown mental health. So that means I will be back on here in about two hours. So, uh, check us out, check us out, and, um, you know, let's, let's, let's continue this conversation. Um, even beyond election, let's continue these, this conversation around affordable housing, crime, public investment, and, and so on and so forth, all the things that we've talked about this evening. Alright, good people, y'all take care and we'll see y'all soon.
Thank you all.